All right. It's 6:32. Lake Cam all set? You're excellent. So, I'm going to open the Board of Selectment meeting for Wednesday, March 20th, 2019, 6:30 PM. We have Lake Cam taping. It appears that nobody else is taping the meeting. So, the first item on our agenda is to meet with Town Council regarding the town zoning bylaws regarding special permits for medical and recreational marijuana facilities and options related to potentially limiting the number of marijuana facilities, host community agreements, revisions to the Cannabis Control Commission's rules and regulations and other CCC items, Department of Public Health takeover by the CCC, or other marijuana-related procedural matters. We tried to get everything we possibly could in there so that we could have a real discussion regarding what's going on, along with the fact that we have some host community agreements in front of us also that, I know you guys have kind of redlined or requested the redline that came from some of our applicants. So, I think, you know, overall, what we wanted to do is really, first and foremost, is take a look at our zoning bylaws and say, with regard to the fact that now the DPH has taken over, or the CCC has taken over the rules and regs of the DPH, with regard to medical facilities, do we need to do anything, first and foremost, with regard to our existing zoning laws that we'll need or want to bring forward to Town Meeting? So, I think that's the first question that we're gonna throw at you.
Okay. So, as of right now, as you're aware, there's two different regulatory paths here in the bylaw. One is for registered marijuana dispensaries, which is a special permit from the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then we have a separate, more comprehensive portion of the zoning bylaw that deals with special permit from the Planning Board for the adult-use marijuana establishments and marijuana retailers. So, when the Cannabis Control Commission took over, from the Department of Health, regulation of the medical side of this industry, they really, at this point in time, have made no changes to the regulations as they existed, other than to perhaps bring them, some cosmetic-type changes to bring them more into alignment with how the general industry is operating and the terminology that's being used by the Cannabis Control Commission. But substantively, they're still regulating these in the same manner as the Department of Public Health is, which is to say that there really is just a single license being issued for an RMD, and it's what we call vertically-integrated, and it has the retail and the growing and the processing all sort of lumped together under that single umbrella, although you have the ability to sort of separate those uses out and do them at different locations. So, from a state regulatory standpoint, there really isn't any substantial change, but now that we're sort of in the trenches on doing some of these permits, the issue has come up because there are establishments looking to do co-locations and things like that, as to whether or not it perhaps makes sense to have a more unified bylaw that treats these uses equally under perhaps a single permit-granting authority, so that the process is more streamlined and that you have perhaps one permit-granting authority looking at these applications. So, that, I'm gonna just throw it back to you there.
Yeah, so I guess, you know, one of the questions then is really, you know, the existing, so if we were really looking to change up the medical marijuana bylaw, the only thing, or potentially the adult use, I mean, obviously, the special permit granting authority is different. We have rules and regs on the adult use related to the special permit that are enumerated, certainly within our adult-use regs, which we don't have in the medical regs.
Right.
It's very vague, you know, when it comes to the, for the medical side. And I guess, you know, so that's a question for us that we'll have to debate and then talk to, you know, Planning Board, related to what we want to do if we want to change the special permit granting authority to one group, I guess.
Nate, actually, we had a great conversation in the ZBAC about this, and maybe you want to touch on that with, just give kind of the backstory. So, you might know this, but, and you probably know this too. The zoning board is doing a piece of this relative to the medical. The Planning Board is doing a piece relative to the recreational. And the conversation really was from the Planning Board people. So, we have a group called the Zoning Bylaw Review Committee that puts forward zoning changes to Town Meeting, but really for the purpose of cleaning up language, but also for putting forward kind of what I would call bigger zoning changes for consideration. Really, what we would hope would be a function of our Planning Board, but they don't do it, and we think it's a necessary aspect of how we want to see things changed. So, we've put this together and we had this conversation. There were a couple members of the Planning Board at that meeting, and they have a lot of feedback on the development of their process, which they think they finally figured out after kind of hitting their thumb with it several times. But they're happy to not be involved. They're good with the site plan review aspect of it, but they don't necessarily care if they're the special permit granting authority. So, I think that's one piece of it that they want to keep, is the site plan review, which I think is great, because that's what they do, but the special permit granting aspect could either go to the zoning board, or it could go to the Board of Selectment. So, that's kind of, that's the bulk of that conversation we had at that level.
Yeah, so I mean, that's really the question that we're gonna be having to talk about with the groups is, you know, who would be responsible for issuing the special permit, for the most part? And I think, you know, the only other question I have to kind of back up before we get into, you know, that sort of nitty-gritty, but with regard to the references in our medical law related to the existing CMRs, do they point to the new CMRs, or are those completely deleted, and do we need to change the language anyways regarding that?
Yeah. I mean, at a minimum, we may want to consider an update to this 705 CMR, 725, because that no longer exists. It's now 935-501. You are not the only community that is in that boat, having adopted medical back when DPH is doing that. So, I mean, there's sort of an understanding that because those have been lifted and replaced, it's sort of an easy translation, if you know what you're looking for. But as a cleanup matter, that would be something to put on the list.
Yeah, okay. Yeah, so that's the, kind of, the first piece. But then the second piece is really just, again, would we want to actually then go into the special permit rules and regs that exist under the adult use, and what would we pull out, I guess, of that and give authority somewhere else versus where it sits right now, which is with the Planning Board? Because it's kind of mixed in here, too, where it talks about site plan review, but it's kind of all completed or all-consuming in the special permit granting authority.
Well, I'd like to talk a little bit about that process and maybe see what the advantages are and the disadvantages are of having the Planning Board involved at that level, because I think that was part of that conversation we had as well, is that they had to figure out how to do this, and maybe their checklist, for lack of a better way of putting it, could be helpful for the zoning board and/or another board, if they were to become a special permit granting authority. But I guess the question is, and maybe this is something that you can shed some light on, in terms of, what is it that a board should be concerned with relative to a special permit? Right? What is the scope of granting a special permit? And then, I think from there, once we're clear on that, we can say, all right, well, who's suited to do that? And what aspects of this process take into account certain aspects of this business that maybe we don't necessarily need to be concerned with on the Town Level? I think this is a highly regulated industry, and that there's a lot of work that an applicant needs to do on the scale to get a license. What are the operative things, what are the concerns we have from a community perspective that should shape how that special permit is granted? So, that's kind of a mouthful, but that's kind of the way I'm thinking about this, is what should we be looking for? What is our role?
Yeah, so, a couple of observations. Number one, when you have a special permit granting authority versus just site plan, you have what is known as a discretionary permit. And so, built into that is the ability to deny for reasons that are not arbitrary and capricious or unlawful. But you have the ability to look at an application and look at the situation and where an applicant is proposing to locate, and under what conditions, and you can either condition, or in certain circumstances, you may decide that this is not a good fit for the location, there may be issues that are insurmountable, that cannot be conditioned away, and you have a greater authority, discretionary authority to deny that. Site plan review does not have that same discretion, and the purpose of site plan is really to look at sort of those on-the-ground logistics of how this business is operating, in terms of sort of your parking and your configurations and your, perhaps, other things that could potentially be mitigated, and then you have the ability to condition, but not deny, based on those issues that need attention or mitigation. So, on the one hand, the special permit granting authority has a certain discretionary ability to sort of take the larger, you know, look at this, but when you get to the site plan side of this, you really are looking at how can we best condition this to meet the needs of the community?
Now, let me stop you for a second, just for clarification sake. This is site plan review, not approval, right?
What?
So, the RMD...
No, the Planning Board is both.
You know, what I'm asking is, you can have site plan review, and you can have site plan approval, right? Are those two different standards?
Generally, they are not, and I think this is one thing that perhaps, this is perhaps unique to Lakeville, is that my understanding is that, under certain conditions or circumstances, the Planning Board engages in a site plan review that doesn't amount to a decision and an approval. They simply look at a project and give some feedback without actually... Now, the way that site plan operates in...
The rest of the world.
Lots of other communities. Is much like a special permit. There's an application, there's a public hearing, there's a review, there's a decision that has conditions conditioning the project. And so, to the extent the Planning Board, and perhaps that's something that needs clarification in the context of what we are addressing here, because I believe that the adult-use bylaw talks about site plan approval, which, sort of, in my experience, is that process, that sort of special, that hearing process that results in a decision.
Right, and why is the need for a decision?
And I believe that how it's operated in other circumstances, especially with the medical side, has been more of a, we kind of advise the zoning board, and we just, we review this and give them back our comments.
Okay, and I just, because I know Nate and I have talked about that, and I was just curious what your take on that was, and not to get off-track on what we were talking about, but I think for the sake of understanding, that was helpful for me.
Yeah, but I think it's a good distinction then, therefore, so site plan approval can condition, but it can't deny, essentially, but the special permit is the one that could deny. So, when you look at the industry and the requirements, that there's a host community agreement that sits with the Board of Selectmen, that's also a means by which you can essentially deny, if you can't get to a negotiated resolution.
Right, but I think what, there's an important aspect to this, and it's the same with the special permit, is that you can't deny on the basis of it being arbitrary and capricious. So, as a matter of course, we've been meeting with all of these folks and really giving them what they need to move forward without any dive into, well, I shouldn't say any. We do ask for certain financial information, we want a business plan, we, there is a cursory review of what their plan is, what their security protocols are, but again, to a large extent, that stuff has to conform with state regulations. I guess the question is, if we just determined that we didn't want any more marijuana companies to locate in Lakeville, can the Board of Selectmen, as a matter of policy, just say, we've had enough, we're gonna say no? And is that then become arbitrary and capricious?
Well, yeah, so the arbitrary and capricious standard is connected to the special permit standard of review. Whether or not to enter into a host community agreement, that's a little bit more difficult issue.
Well, there's no case law relative to any of that yet, but my point is, is that I'm afraid that if, and I'm gonna be gone in, what, less than a week?
Two hours.
Yes. I have one more.
You have one more after this?
Yes.
Yeah, we have one Monday.
Twenty-fifth.
Four more hours.
John's already written me off.
Yeah.
I guess my point is, is that I, I'm afraid, I shouldn't say afraid, I'm concerned that if this board were to make a determination that we've got enough folks we're doing business with, we don't want to do this anymore, for the time being, we're gonna put forward a policy by which we don't enter into any more HCAs, that there could be a potential legal fallout under that arbitrary and capricious aspect. Now, what if they also apply for zoning, you know, for a special permit under the zoning? That triggers, they can do that without the HCA, correct?
They can. They, no, well, actually, they cannot.
They can apply. For medical, are you talking about?
Well, no, no, I'm talking about adult-use recreational.
Well, because they'd apply to the Planning Board, not to zoning.
Well, for adult use.
Yes, yes, no, I'm sorry.
Okay, so that's why I was getting...
Right, no, no, right, I'm ahead of myself in the sense that the zoning board is...
Well, the only thing that we can do is, we can limit the number of retail establishments in town, but you can't limit the number of cultivators or infused product manufacturers. All you could do is, we could create an overlay district to limit them to a marijuana industrial overlay district.
Right.
Or we could change, I suppose if, you know, Town Meeting then decided that, guess what, we're changing the zoning again to ban all uses. Well, although, we couldn't, because we, we're almost over the timeline where we'd need to...
You need two years.
Yeah, so, so, I mean, I think that the issue is really, if you want to try to control the number of applicants, because you don't want 20 cultivators here, we can limit retail, but that's Town Meeting vote.
You can limit, you can limit the number of other uses.
Can we do that, too?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so we have that option, too, then, okay.
Okay, and I think that's, I think that's the best way to do it, because it, that way, it's ironclad, right? It's a zoning change.
It gets Town Meeting.
You could decide, now, maybe, like, and John has, I think, made a great point in saying, well, maybe we don't want to limit it, because we've talked with a bunch of people, and nobody's even selling anything yet, and how do you know whether they're even gonna be successful? Just because you've signed an HCA with them doesn't mean they're ever gonna get off the ground, and if you limit it to the number of HCAs, then perhaps you're not giving yourself the opportunity to be in business with folks that may get to market faster and produce revenue for the town. So, there's all of these kind of ideas, but what I wanted to bring up, though, was simply the logistics of, if I'm the marijuana applicant, and I want to do adult-use recreational, and there's a policy by which this board has said, no more HCAs, maybe I go to the Planning Board and ask for a special permit, and does that then trigger their need to answer it? And then, you know, I'm seeing how the town could get dragged into this without having a bylaw that gave absolute discretion to fixing a number. And again, I'm not in agreement, I'm not arguing for that, I'm just talking these things through.
Yeah, I mean...
And this is real, high-level kind of strategy stuff.
And I think, though, what my thought is, that, you know, if people don't care that all of Kenneth Welch Drive really is turning into, you know, a cultivation lane, it's more along the lines of, we've got Crooked Lane, we've got other industrial areas in town that maybe people don't want to have that become an area that's too close to a residential area that's industrially zoned, where people are coming in and they might be concerned about, you know, what that might mean in terms of having cultivation facilities or infused product facilities, or potentially dispensaries in that sort of area of town. I think what my approach would be is to start talking about a special, an overlay district, and what that might look like, because then we really can control where, which I think will naturally control the number, but even if it doesn't control the number, then you have them all at least concentrated in one area. And I think, but again, that's a conversation we need to get input on, and obviously, we'd be bringing it to Town Meeting, so, because we have that option, too. And that would be a complete redo of this, essentially.
Right, right. So, yeah, I mean, we've kind of got off-track a little bit on the idea of, do we want the Planning Board to be the special permit granting authority? But I think that that's, I mean, that's really the big issue, is, what are the numbers that we're comfortable with, and how do we get to a place where we determine where they go and to what extent? And then, I think, coming down from that is the question of, logistically, do we want to have it set up the way we do? Well, I think we don't, because we're talking about making it easier or more streamlined. So, I mean, I'm just trying to recap the concepts.
But I think, mine would be the same two points, well, actually, just one, to streamline the process that we have today, because we have a number of applicants in front of us, and we just need to bite the bullet and perhaps do it under one group, perhaps under the zoning board, and that we're approving retail, growing, processing, and that the Planning Board only be doing the site plan review as they would traditionally do in all aspects of it. Because what happens is, when they're getting it, the medical has already been approved, the building has already been built. Now, we're rehashing what's already been worked on for the last six to 18 months, and so we should do the retail, the medical, the growing, and the processing with one group, would be my suggestion. If it has to be two, it certainly would be unfavorable, in my mind, to make it the Selectmen, but that's okay, too. Just, if you need two groups, then let the Selectmen be the second group. If you don't need two groups, I would just do the zoning board and get rid of the site plan approval with the Planning Board, because they really are rehashing what's already been approved and already been built.
So, correct me if I'm wrong, right now, all of the applicants that have come before you guys are actually rehabbing existing buildings, right? Nobody's actually building a facility.
Yes, right, correct.
Not only that, but they've already modified that building...
Right.
...for the medical aspect of it.
For the goal, which is the same.
Well, some have. I mean, we have some that are just adult-use cultivation, but then we have a number of them that are co-locations, essentially.
Right, but they'll, right, but we believe, we believe they'll all be coming back. I mean, when you say that there's only cultivation, I don't know which one that is.
There's two of them.
Bonneville Farms and who?
No, the, well, the one that kind of disappeared, the Adam and Matt Diorio, they didn't really have a name of a company, I think, at that time.
Oh, he was...
Northeast Alternatives, the one from Farm River.
He was years ago, Northeast Alternatives is just a grow facility.
I think, I think John has, and I don't recall if Mitzi was at those Planning Board meetings, but I know John has a unique...
I went to every one of them.
Right, he has a unique perspective, that he sat at those meetings and understands that process, and I think that's the, that's a great thing to...
And I certainly took some of my frustration out on Katie to say, my God, we're talking about buildings that have already been built. This isn't someone who's before us with a manufacturing plan to build a 200,000-square-foot building.
Well, and I think that was, to some degree, a unique situation, where they had come in for medical way before adult use was even really on the table, and then they were coming in after the fact. Certainly, if you have an applicant who's coming before the boards right now proposing to do both, there could be a joint ZBA Planning Board hearing on the, on a single application to get them through that process in the short term, until this gets cleaned up.
That'd be fun to share.
But that was, to some degree, a unique situation of one coming before the other, partly due to the timing of when adult use became legal.
Right.
Right.
Yeah, but I think that, you know, clearly, to John's point, it's like, the pain points for the applicants of going through what seemed like a duplicative process with two different boards doesn't make any sense.
Different outcomes.
And different outcomes, yeah, which absolutely makes no sense.
And it went on forever, and the nights that Katie wasn't there, I was absolutely just beside myself, because it would just be rehashing. But I get it, because we signed them up for the approval process. My mistake was voting for that. I should have said, site plan review. If it needed an applicant approval as a special permit, it should have been the zoning board and/or the Selectmen. And I'm saying, pick one or the other tonight, I mean, and let's change the process. We need to streamline the process. If this was the manufacturing process, someone's building a plastic molding plant.
I mean, the other...
We wouldn't make their life so difficult.
But the other thing, and I'm curious from you guys, how many communities you've seen have actually created a separate marijuana zoning board? Because I know that was something that was kind of a none, that was like, put out there as like, a option to have a separate permitting.
You mean, like, a separate permitting entity?
Yeah, that they created their own permitting process, which, so no one really did that. So, they offered it as an option.
Generally, being put under zoning or planning.
I mean, I have one town that tried.
Think of a lot of them that are...
Yeah.
One of my last, one of my last ones, however, that the zoning board approves, whether the building is built properly, properly sprinkled, properly architecturally sound, is Nate Darling's job, and he does that job very well. So, I see other groups getting in, asking questions that the fire department's been there, the police department's been there, the sprinkler systems are there. The questions that are being asked are being asked by people that didn't have to ask them before. That's Nate Darling's job. We shouldn't be bringing to task people of things that are building-related, because that's Nate's job. So, I look at it that the zoning board approves or disapproves, hopefully approves.
Well, they don't have purview over the inside of the building, correct? It's just the site.
Listen, all this, if you ever watched the meetings, it got into the...
Let's repeat that.
It got into the inside of the buildings, it got into everything.
They don't have the authority to do that.
When we voted for it, we said, the same thing as Katie said, that it's the site plan approval of the lighting, the parking, the drainage. If you went there, it got into all kinds of other issues, and because they thought that that's their role. And it's difficult to pull that back. I would suggest that you streamline the process, and as a major point, we have a half-a-dozen people coming to us.
I mean, two things, then, clearly, from here. One is simple, is to propose an article to clean up the medical bylaw changes, to just change the language of the new CMR, the end. And then, it's going into the adult use, and what we would be doing is just bifurcating the site plan review from the special permit granting authority and changing it over to the ZBA. And then, again, that's kind of the simplest change, right? And then, if we wanted to talk about limiting license numbers and things like that, we could offer that, or creating an overlay district, which would change the entire thing, but I think that's really what we're talking about, right?
Well, right. I want to, I want to resolve the streamlining, and certainly, tonight, we can talk about whether limiting or the overlay. I'm not concerned, because the people, if someone comes in town, the next group that will be coming in town after this group will be the grow facilities, and there are plenty, there's plenty of industrial acreage...
Right, they're looking at Crooked Lane.
...that they can do grow facilities. So, my belief is that we don't want more than a few, we'll call it, retail facilities on one street, but that doesn't preclude me from suggesting that at one end of town is Millennium Circle that could have a couple of people, and there's other ends of town that could also absorb them. But that's, that's up to them, looking at the industrial. I don't need another area to bring anything in. There's plenty of industrial area, and I think it'll be allowed in farms also.
Right, but I guess what I mean by that is more so, if you changed the zoning location to a new zone that was just a marijuana overlay, then for new applicants coming in would have to locate in that new zone. And the concern that I would have, that I would think that we would hear from people, is on Crooked Lane, which is really a residential area, if we have nothing in place, either limiting the number of adult-use retail establishments, or we don't have it kind of segregated to certain places where we're okay with retail, then you could have right in the middle of a residential area that happens to be zoned industrial... If we have no means by which, because it would be considered arbitrary and capricious for us to deny that host community agreement, that someone could just go and apply for a dispensary in the middle of a residential area. And that's going to be a disaster.
You could deny that based on the special permit and not having-
You could deny it.
You could say that it's-
I'm happy if, I'm happy if a grow facility goes there. I don't know what I-
Enough grow, I mean, a retail.
Well, no, I know that, but, but I would be happy to-
A residential is enough to be older, based upon the proximity to residential.
Just used by itself. You could look at the surrounding area and find that it wasn't within harmony of that surrounding area.
Okay. And that would be done through the special permit granting authority?
Yeah, and one thing I can say is that the zoning board, when they looked at the medical licenses that came before them, I, I understand that the, the bylaw looks just like this, but that's not what they did. They, they actually went through section 7.4, which is the special permit section. And they actually went through, you know, piece by piece, you know, is it, is it more detrimental to the neighborhood, is it not? You know, these, the medical ones that came before the ZBA were, you know, for lack of a better term, they were kind of slam dunks because they were in, they were in the industrial park. They were converting a building. They didn't have to talk about creating parking, landscaping. It was all there. So, you know.
But, but we did spend five meetings after that talking about that and, and other-
For planning, that planning, yeah.
And other boards. No, you're right. I, I'd like to come up with the process to streamline it as, as number one.
But isn't that just changing?
I'd like to hear from Nate on this. What are, what are your thoughts? I mean, I think you had some stuff to say at our ZBRAC meeting.
Yeah, so, so number one, I'm not so sure-
On streamlining.
Yeah, about streamlining. So, when we're dealing with medical or adult use now, I'm not so sure they can't be in, in the same bylaw section. We can just incorporate them as to be marijuana facilities. And then in streamlining, we, so, we, we talk about how the planning board handled it, how the zoning board of appeals handled it. I think that somebody can only go through a process as well as what's written that they can follow. So, we need to identify authorities having jurisdiction, the scope of what they're going to review to make a decision upon, and then, and then set expectations. So, and I think John mentioned, you know, the site plan review versus site plan approval, and I know you said the same. Our bylaw has a specific session, section for site plan review, along with a fee structure set at the planning board. So, if we use site plan and review and site plan approval interchangeably within our bylaw, with not, with no fee structure or guidance for site plan approval, it's somewhat disingenuous to say, you know, that we could use them, we can't really use them interchangeably. You know, site plan review has always been, you know, drainage, parking, sight lighting, signage, entrance and exit to a public way, and, and say, this is what you do. You set, send recommendations to the permit grant, the special permit granting authority, and they incorporate those into the special permit. So, we, we need to first identify what we expect people to look at. And you go right down the laundry list, and, and then you move forward. And it's got to be a singular authority having jurisdiction. Two separate authority, authorities having jurisdiction looking at the same subject matter is just a mess.
Without that laundry list.
Without the laundry list. And, you know, furthermore, the site plan review process for the planning board is a thousand dollar fee. So, you know, we, we get into a situation, what comes first, the chicken or the egg? Well, we know that, you know, at least the adult use, we're looking at a, a host community agreement, a provisionalary license, and site plan approval, right? So, you get all of that in before you even go to the ZBA for, for a special permit. And that seems to me like it's a little unfair. And so, in a situation like Crooked Lane, if one were to look at that and say, it's a residential area, it doesn't belong there, that's really not the time to say, permit denied. You know, I mean, it just seems like a, it seems like a cumbersome-
So, usually, usually the, the zoning relief, meaning the special permit or the various, that's always done before site plan review. But the site plan review that's in the bylaw is a little unusual in the fact that there's no section requiring a decision. So, how do you, you know, even with marijuana aside, how do you issue a building permit? Do you get something from the planning board that says that they're satisfied?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
That they've gone through the process and, and they've satisfied everything from there.
But what if they didn't? They only have so much time to answer anyway, right? And then it's constructively granted?
Yeah, I believe. I don't have it in front of me, but I believe it's only 21 days.
Right. But almost everyone does give their, a, a written report, whether it be from the Board of Health, or a selectman might say, they're not going to comment. But all the departments do pipe in on the review process. But Nate, when you were talking about, summarizing what you said, are you saying the permitting authority would be the zoning board or, or zoning board?
It's my opinion, it would be the zoning board or the Board of Selectmen. And then the reason why I say the Board of Selectmen, if they're in front of the Board of Selectmen for the HCA anyway, they could, the Board of Selectmen would be as capable to incorporate the site plan review comments from the planning board into a special permit while they were doing the HCA.
Right, but we do the HCA prior to, prior to the other permits being issued. So, we, we would do, you know, the, the letter of non-opposition, and we work on a host community agreement. But if, if you're in favor of the zoning board being the permitting authority, but I, I want to try to expand it, that it's all done in one, even though someone's asking for a medical, can we wrap it in that you're approving medical, retail, growing, and processing in one fell swoop, and that you're not? So, when someone comes back, and, and this is what's happening now, is they came back, they, they did a medical, now they got to come back and ask for a recreational. So, even though people haven't asked for it, I believe they'll be coming back asking for it. Can you wrap that all in one, even though they're not asking for it, but you're really permitting it?
It depends, though, because I think if you're, if you're going recreational, it, it could be
Yeah.
an expansion of that business, or it could require more parking. I mean, there certainly, I think-
Then at least-
Does that make sense?
Right, right.
It's like a-
So, at least the, the medical, the growing, the processing, that, that, well, the, the medical gets you into opening the door too. That, that gets you into the retail facility.
Medical could be coming here just to have one of their retail establishments that's medical only here too. I mean, typically, what we've seen has been the full, you know, they want to do the cultivation processing and have a medical retail establishment in Lakeville.
Right, right.
But actually, neither of these is not.
I think that's because of the buildings.
Well, it is, and that's-
Our buildings are conducive for grow.
Everyone wanted to do the medical because that's what was permitted in the state. And what is it, 80% of those licenses will go away because they can recreationally get it. Really wasn't a medical, there are medical cases, plenty of them. So, I, so you, we wouldn't suggest we wrap them all in?
I wouldn't.
I think you could have a single permit process with a single permit granting authority for all of the uses. And then if, if somebody comes in, and, and what they proposed initially was, let's say, adult use cultivation, and you give them a decision, and then they want to expand to medical, then they come back for a modification of that decision to expand the scope of the business. But it's all under the same permit granting authority, so it's, it's a continuing review of what they, the process they had already started.
You have to, you have to remember due process. You have to remember that the butters, you know, everybody needs to know exactly what, what the proposal is.
So, my suggestion is that the zoning board be the one permitting approval.
So, did, are you thinking of, are you thinking of drafting a bylaw that will encompass both medical and adult use? And the special permit process will incorporate kind of exactly what site plan review also incorporates? And so, they do not have to go to site plan review, they just have to do, just have to get a special permit?
Or, I think, yeah, both?
No, I think the site, site plan review is a necessary aspect of it. But again, like to Nate's point, that's a very specific thing that they're looking at. It's, it's, and it's incorporated into the ZBA decision.
Right, so, so what we, I guess what we could do is, we could craft a bylaw that incorporates all of site plan review into it geared towards marijuana? Because there's some stuff in here that's not geared towards marijuana. But it appears, it seems that the, that the lengthy adult use special permit requirements were, that was the problem. So, perhaps we don't do it that way, or, or I'm not sure how you're, if you just want to keep them separate. So, they're going to have to get a special permit decision plus site plan review.
Like, I think the question is if, if you could, does it achieve the same end result by just changing the language in the bylaw, where it says adult use marijuana establishments? And I guess it would be all, you know, marijuana establishments, you could add in the medical. And marijuana retailers shall require a special permit from the ZBA and site plan review from the planning board and go through that process? I mean, is that as simple as it could potentially be? Or are we looking to try to change what's included in the actual bylaw that says, this is what we need?
I think it could be that simple. I think the question here that we're grappling with is that when you have two different reviewing authorities, then there's, there's necessarily some overlap in what they're looking at. And, and if you have an applicant go to the planning board for site plan review, well, they're going to be looking at whatever is in the bylaw, site plan review related. And some of that is also going to be looked at by the ZBA. And so, so you're still going to have that two-board process that's going to be required. Now, in many communities, the, like I said, the site plan approval or site plan review process is in and of itself a decision-making process. And so, you would end up, in that case, with two decisions. But my understanding of the way it operates here is that the planning board would, would do the review. The project may go through some changes as a, as a result of that review. And ultimately, their sign-off on the project is what then goes to the special permit granting authority to be reviewed after it has gone through the site plan review process.
That is the way it probably works.
I, I just have a question about this process. If, for example, in the context of site plan review, the planning board had some concerns about parking configuration, and they wanted to require changes on the plan to, to reconfigure the parking, how would that be addressed by the applicant?
They would make the changes and go back to the planning board. This is the way it's been working.
And then would the planning board sign off on a plan?
Yeah, they end up endorsing a site plan.
So, they basically endorse a site plan once all of the changes that they want to have made, have been made to that plan?
That, that's how they do it. And, you know, to me, the process of site plan review in our bylaw was stemmed from the MS4 permits, where they required, you know, the site plan review on anything that disturbed more than an acre of land. When creating the bylaw for site plan review, we downsized that tremendously. We said, anytime you do more than 1,500 square feet of business structure, you need site plan review. And any more, anytime you disturb more than 3,000 square feet of residential structure, you also need site plan review. Slightly different procedures, very, very similar. So, now we fast forward to our, you know, our special permit requirements, where they specifically say special permit granting authority, and then just, to me, arbitrarily thrown into that language and with site plan review. Well, if you're modifying an existing building where there's no disturbance of exterior surfaces, it wouldn't require a site plan review. So, why are we asking for it within the special permit provisions? And, you know, a couple of years ago, with, within the zoning advisory committee, you know, we had kind of put our thoughts together and said, in, in the event that a special permit is required under this bylaw, it would preclude you from having to go through the site plan review process. The zoning board of appeals is more than capable of doing the exterior of building, drainage, and parking, and signage, and all these other things. They typically hire a peer review engineer. So, I would be perfectly fine if it was just the zoning board of appeals. But I don't say that lightly because I have a great deal of respect for the planning board. And I don't want somebody to think that, you know, we don't want you doing that, or, or, you know, this is better suited with this board. So, it becomes a FIFTM issue. And it's not the intent. It's how we make best use of our volunteer board's times, right? So, we don't want to be in a situation where you got to go here, 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 and here, and there. All of these volunteers are wasting their time to look at the same thing. And we don't want to make it cumbersome to our applicants. So, if we can convey that information in that manner and say, look, we're trying to streamline this for everyone, and, and make it crystal clear so we can, we can get the permit out.
I, I guess I would say, from my perspective, I mean, if they're already doing that in certain cases, and they're the special permit granting authority in certain cases, and they're capable of-
95% of the cases.
Of, so, they're capable of everything that's listed in here. I wouldn't want to see it coming to the Board of Selectmen, who doesn't do that at all, you know?
No, that was just, no, no, I wouldn't, I wouldn't want to do that only if legally you have to have another authority. If you don't, it's the zoning board.
So, if we just change it all over to just the ZBA, and we cut out the planning board, I just thought site plan review had to go through the planning board, but-
You could put language within the special permit, for a special permit, right?
Right, that's what I was saying, just to have one, just to have one special permit. And that special permit will have language in it that kind of mirrors site plan language.
So, we get to the language.
We can take up the site plan reference. We don't have to call it site plan. But if there are concerns that you want to see addressed as part of that special permit review, we can build those additional sort of review criteria into the special permit process so that there's some guidance for the, the ZBA on what they should look at.
But that would be not put into the bylaws. That would just be guidance on how to apply what's included in the bylaw.
You put it in the bylaw. So, like, I mean, we could just take, for example-
If you don't want them to go off the script.
Okay.
Because then-
Adequacy of methods of disposal of waste.
Yeah, if you wanted them to look at the adequacy of disposal of methods of waste, which is under site plan review right now.
You just put it in the bylaw.
You can just put it in the special permit criteria that they look at under the marijuana language that they are going to also look at that. And then you can leave out anything that's not relevant.
And the ZBA, the ZBA, the hearings that I was at, the ZBA did look at, they did look at waste. They looked at drainage. They did look at, they asked for, well, actually, actually, I think there was at least two where the applicants provided security plans and fire plans and HVAC systems. So, the applicants were quite forthcoming at the ZBA hearings anyway, but, but they did. They took a look at all of this stuff.
Well, and I, I just think it's ironic just sitting here because, of course, we have two different members of town council because you both deal with different boards and the same thing. So, you guys have already crossed over on all of this. And this is, this is just another ridiculous redundancy. Not that the two of you are redundant.
Yeah. Try not to say it comes to that.
Yeah.
You both do a fabulous job.
Nice one.
I meant within the process, not, not the-
I appreciate the collective knowledge of our legal counsel.
You see, I, I look at it that, listen, we build other manufacturing buildings in town. And this is, when I say over scrutinized, for a good point, the state's involved. Let, let them be involved, and we reference what laws that they have to go by, and, and that's it. But I certainly, when people are building other buildings, they seem to go up- purview seems to be pretty well. And, and when we talk about reviews, we're all asked to do a site plan review. I mean, Board of Health, everyone, everyone gets to put their dibs in it, but they don't, you know, they'll ask them questions.
When a special permit is applied for under the zoning board of appeals, the planning board will still get notification of that special permit. So, they'll still have a chance to, you know, forward recommendations.
I think every board gets that. Is that right, Nate?
Exactly, yeah, regardless of-
Yeah, every, every board gets that.
That's the ZBA follows.
And the planning board does put those on their agenda. At the planning board meetings I've been at, they go through all of the referred applications.
And the only thing I'd like to add a little bit, and you, you broached that subject a little bit earlier, is if someone's in front of us for a medical, that, and, and they want to modify it to be recreational, or they want to modify it for being a, a process or edibles, however, it has to be broken out. If there's nine groups, and maybe there'll be 11 groups, and there'll be 14 groups or whatever, that we outline the next step. If you want to add to this and modify this, this is what you need to do. So, we don't start at ground zero again.
So, so that's a little bit difficult because under 48, section nine, there is no provision for modifying a special permit. So, any modification of a special permit would have to go through 48, section 11, meaning a butter notice, publication. With the due process issue.
Yeah, that's okay.
But they-
Right, but as long as we keep it at the zoning board, then we're, then we're back to the same group.
And, and I think then, you know, when, so, for example, like, if there's going to be a potential, I guess, you know, our role then as selectmen with regard to the HCA is to really just be communicating with whoever the special permit granting authority happens to be because, as you said, you don't want to have them start to go through the process if we're going to not necessarily want to issue a, like, if we have concerns over the location for other reasons, that we wouldn't want to sign an HCA. Because as, you know, we've kind of looked at it again, as we talk about, we get the business plan, we get the business plan, we kind of look at it from the business aspect and, you know, who are these people? How are they funded? What's their capitalization? But we're not really looking at it from the, you know, necessarily what the ZBA would be looking at it for. So when we go to negotiate in HCA, we shouldn't be negotiating them if they, you know, almost need like a prior review by.
Yeah, but we, we, we kind of know, we, we know where they're going. We know what the building is. So far, the people have just modified buildings. In the future, they'll be building, buildings for growth facilities. Minimumly, it would be growth facilities.
Yeah.
And, and those, to me, it's just another manufacturing group out of sight, out of mind. If you didn't put a, a sign out there, the people may not even, may not even know it.
Yes.
Right.
And.
All right. Um, so I think this is good. We're all good with the idea of the ZBA?
Yeah. So I guess the question is moving forward on this, if we, again, kind of, I mean, would you guys draft this for us? Perfect. So that, you know, we have it drafted such that we have, you know, the, the convergence of the medical with the adult use in the same bylaw and then really just whatever other conditional permits you want to put in here or guidelines. That's a piece that I don't know that we have to get.
So do you want to, um, do you want to set up a step-by-step process, meaning the fact that they have to get their HCA first? Do you, do you want to have that as a step? Because that could be a requirement. I mean, it is in, in adult, in adult use, it is a requirement.
Right.
But in medical, it's not because it's just a straight, straight special permit. So.
I think that would be good to have a consistent, and it also gives the selectmen the opportunity to have that conversation prior to the applicant.
Yeah, I think it's a good idea to do that.
Right, yeah. So that would be memorialized also in this bylaw.
Got it.
Yeah. And then we change it to the ZBA.
And then, oh, sorry. I have one more just procedural thing. So then we come to the point, then we come to the question, you have a facility that is going to increase by fifteen hundred square feet. Are they still going to have to go to site plan review?
If they trigger it separately.
If they trigger it separately unless you put the exception within there. If it's in conjunction with the special permit, I would say they shouldn't have.
What, what do you want? What, would you, do you want to cut out site plan review because we're going to incorporate it into the special permit procedure?
I, I would, I would say yes.
If they're doing a modification of the special permit, they'd have to go back to the ZBA for that anyway, which would incorporate the site plan review elements, right? So if it would trigger the planning board then getting involved, it would then become redundant because they're already would be going back to the ZBA because of the due process necessity of it. So, yeah, definitely get rid of that.
The simpler you can make it.
That might not, that, we might have to modify the special, I mean, the site plan review section.
Yeah, we'll have to take a look at this.
Yeah, that might be the easiest.
So just a real quick question. I mean, when we're looking at the HCA provisionary license, uh, provisional license and special permit, can an establishment start if they, so we always, you know, do condition things, you know, and say, okay, conditional upon getting your provisional license, conditional upon having your HCA. Theoretically, establishment can't start with one out of three, two out of three. They need all three things, right?
Yeah. So the way that this works on the state level, they, they can't even proceed to a provisional license before they have an HCA. The HCA is a prerequisite of a provisional. And then once they have a provisional, under, with the exception of medical, the way that the bylaws drafted for adult use is that they need to have the provisional before they come for their local permit. So at that point in time, they have an HCA, they've been to the state and through sort of that preliminary review process, then they can come for their local permit. Um, and then at that point in time, once they get their local permit and they've got the provisional, um, they can start, they can get a building permit, build out, get certificate of occupancy. But at that point in time, the state will do the inspection and give, um, their final approval.
So I guess my question would be, is do you find it vital to have the provisional license prior to application with a special permit? Even though the bylaw for adult use says that now, this becomes another, another one of those investment things. And, you know, it's, you go through that process in a place that may not be appropriate in town and they go, they're at the eleventh hour or they're ready to cross the finish line with the special permit because they've done twelve months' worth of work already. And we see, simply say, you're in a residential area or adjacent to a residential area, it's not appropriate.
Yeah.
And everything stops. I mean, is there a way to do a precursory, uh, you know, evaluation at a zoning board of appeals level and just condition it upon getting your provisional, uh, your provisional license?
Yeah. So the, the thinking behind the provisional license was that, um, the state is doing a very high level of review and so they're vetting, you know, they're doing all those background checks and they're doing, they're looking at the finances and they're looking at, um, security plans and everything at a, at a very high level. So the idea of, of requiring the provisional was that anybody who's coming to you for a local permit at that point in time, um, has already really had a, a full screening process at the state level so you can be somewhat assured that, that you don't have to reinvent the wheel on them. Like you don't have to go through all of that. So that was the thinking behind making that a prerequisite to the local permit was to just lighten the load here so that everybody is assured that the state has done its job with respect to its high level of review. Um, if there's interest, I mean, this is really a policy call. If you want to facilitate the process for these people to, to make it easier to get a local permit, um, there's not any legal requirement that you have a condition like that in your bylaw. Certainly that, that could be removed. Um, and, and if you, I mean, they're going to have to get a final license anyway from the state before they operate. So maybe you don't care as much. Maybe you can say, we're going to do our zoning review. We're going to look at the things we do care about and we, we're going to feel confident in the fact that nobody's actually going to open up a shop before they get through that full state process. So maybe you don't need to have, have that in there as a prerequisite. So it's really a policy call as to how in-depth your board wants to look at some of these issues or, um, a, as part of that local permit processing side of things.
I mean, I don't have an opinion either way with that. It just seems like if we're going to have it in the bylaw, that's what it has to happen.
I think the, the biggest issue, you know, for, from the applicant's perspective is that the timeline it takes to get the provisional through the state level means that they've just taken more time before they can even get on an agenda of the ZBA. It just completely slows down the process.
I'm happy with removing it.
I'm okay with it conditional for the, moving forward on it.
Because it is just an arbitrary delay, honestly.
And, and how do you tie up a property for that long? If you have a property that you're looking to invest in?
Right, it's just a cost.
It's a deal killer. Right, a first refusal, they got to pay for it. Right. I mean, they're at risk.
Right.
They're at risk. They may never get their state license, but they could have built out a building and then find out that the, the, the chief accountant did prison time in Pennsylvania somewhere, for all I know. And it's no different than Plainridge Park where they had to throw everyone out of there. They put new people in and they outwallow, they get their license.
The special permit process is the only one that seems to be subjective. So, you know, when you're looking at, and I, I would, I, I don't know if you, you would agree, but if, if you're passing background checks at the state and all of that stuff, I'm not sure you can just say, well, that guy's an all right guy, he did this, but he's all set. Uh, but from a special permit granting authority, uh, perspective, there is that subjectivity to say that if it's substantially more detrimental, if it meets all of the finding criteria, where it doesn't seem like whether it be the HCA or the provisional license, there's that same subjectivity there. Um, and that's the only reason why I say maybe it's conditioned upon those things rather than, you know, if, if somebody gets a special permit and then goes to the state and doesn't pack it, pass a background test, it doesn't have their security down, that's on them. But if they do all of that and meet all those criteria and come back and say, we just don't like the location, that's a little tough.
Right. What, what do you think would be the problem at the town level? I'm just not quite understanding.
It was just the subjectivity of, of the special permit and to say, you know, a special permit can be granted, um, you know, conditioned upon having a, getting the licensing from the state versus making it a precursor.
Because that was the.
That's that chicken and the egg, the liquor license stuff too.
But that's what they ended up doing on Nature's Remedy. It was a catch twenty-two.
Oh, yeah.
Planning board said your application isn't complete because your license isn't in here, but they ultimately conditioned it upon issuance of it. So.
Right. That maybe should be cleared up just a little bit. If that can't, that, that's the main thing. It, it's no different than liquor licenses. I'm not going to give you a permit for a liquor establishment unless you get a liquor license and you can't get the liquor license without having an occupancy permit.
But we did find out that your manager could be deceased and you can still get a license.
Right, there are certain rules that you can break.
Can I ask for a point of clarification? Just on the, um, just like the site plan review. So the zoning board of appeals would actually do the site plan review?
No, we were not going to call it site plan review, but we'll just do any provisions that we think will be incorporated, need to be addressed under the permit criteria.
So when, so when the ZBA usually sends out, um, you know, to the, the other boards and commissions for their input, the planning board would do what? They would be reviewing it for?
Just as if they were, just as if they comment on a variance.
Light parking, training.
Or nothing. I mean, it's, it's like, we don't typically ever give comments on zoning board stuff.
The only things we have in a large drainage area that will not be included in the parcel.
This will be something, this will be something we can change at the town meeting.
When is that?
I, I was going to ask that.
That that's the important part.
We have to sign the warrant by May sixth. So I'm thinking, we do the special, I'm thinking maybe the, these, um, give them time, could go on the special because you're going, you're going to review articles Monday night. Oh, so we could.
The special, you mean in the fall?
No, special before the annual.
Oh, I see. Sure. Yeah.
So when, is it June third? Does that tell me? Yes. Probably put it.
Yeah, when we talked on the ZBAC, we didn't know whether we had time to get this in the pipeline, but I think by having this meeting, we at least have a plan and we can, we can get it started.
Because if we had it, um, the planning board could still have time to hold their hearing.
Right, right. I'm not belittling what they have to do, but the main thing is just to streamline.
But I have to publish the warrant, uh, by May sixth. So.
Yeah.
For the annual.
So when, one for the special?
After that. So. Haven't set that timeline yet.
It's doable.
But we're required on the certain.
What, what special are you talking about?
The special at six thirty before the.
Oh, all right, all right. All right. You're not talking the fall special.
No, no. There might be something that then if, you know, people do want to talk about or if we hear anybody talking about limiting license types, that that could be a fall.
I'm not bringing it up.
No, I know. I, what I mean is if that comes up.
You couldn't bring it up again.
I'm not bringing it up either.
You bring it up again after you've been beat, beat to death for the last two years? Forget it.
The planning board meets regularly, right?
Yeah, twice. The second and the, and the third. The second and fourth. Yeah, I don't think that they changed, um.
Host community agreements section we got on here.
Yeah. So what we want to talk about now is, um, really just the two host community agreements we have in front of us. Oh, yeah. I agree. So I don't know if you guys had a chance to review the HCAs that came through for Monroe Associates and then Twisted Growers. And I think that, you know, just with regard to these two HCAs, we, we created the template and the goal was to just keep the template. Certainly, there's some things in here that probably mean nothing or they're trying to kind of clarify something, but I'm completely fine with leaving it and kind of putting it back to them in our original template and saying, this is what.
Take it or leave it?
I, I say, I say you sign it or you don't.
Right.
That's it. And as far as the commas referencing the new laws versus the old laws, you know, I don't care that they're in there or they're not in there because one's just supersedes the other anyways. So to me, it's, you, you sign it or you don't sign it. And I get, some of it is so minor, but I don't want to spend any money on it.
But a lot of these changes are seemingly minor, but they're all designed to, to limit the scope of liability.
Oh, absolutely. So, so we've. No, we spent a lot of time doing this and I'm for saying, sign it or don't sign it. I'm not going to lose any sleep over it.
I think there was one piece where I think we had like a, there was a word where it was like not plural or something and probably should have been in the template or something.
I wouldn't even change that.
But yeah, totally fine with just leaving the template as is.
The danger is you change minor things and then you lose sight.
The added zero.
Yeah.
Yeah, I don't.
It doesn't matter.
I don't care.
None of it, none of it substantially matters. Sign it or don't sign it.
Yep.
And if they want to meet with us on, one of them on the reopener, we've said, we put that clause in there to protect the town, but clearly they might have a better deal
Oh, yeah.
of, of greater percentages in downtown Cambridge. They might have a better deal in Felmont. They might have a better deal in Province Town. But I'm not going to reopen it for those kind of things, even though we have the right to do that. So we, we spent a lot of time in that reopener provision and we somewhat convinced nature, I don't know if we convinced them or we just said, sign it or don't. Is, is the reopener belongs there? Whether you exercise it or not, the board has to use their discretion to say, listen.
Exactly.
If you're selling in Cambridge and you have a better deal in Cambridge, that might be okay.
Well, and I think that what will be important for us too at some point is to, you know, probably go through our HCA and just take a look at it for what the responsibilities are of the board of selectmen with regard to the HCA in terms of monitoring to ensure, like on a checklist type thing, they're supposed to give us annual certified financial statements. Like they're supposed to give us this stuff. I don't want to let that lax on any of these.
Oh, no.
There's a huge contract in there.
No, no, no. What I'm saying is it's in here, but what I want to do is we could easily, like, forget about it. I want us to be actively monitoring these guys.
There's a huge contract administration aspect to this arrangement.
Exactly. And that's what I want to make sure that we do is that we are actively monitoring all of these guys because we have the right to do so. And, you know, but again, I'm totally fine with that too of kicking it back at them and saying, take it or leave it. This is what we've negotiated.
Right, right. And now who's, who's saying that? Is that, is that Amy or is that Katie? Who's saying that to them?
Amy.
I mean, we get, then you don't want to take it or leave it. You know, they, they, they want them to come in.
I'm annoyed about the zero anyway.
Right. Usually, you can use that as an example. But listen, they have to, you, you can write, you've been there before. You can write and rewrite and rewrite agreements until.
It's a waste of my time.
Nothing gets resolved.
Well, I think that the, I think that the, the most important thing is the fact that, um, that this board, particularly Erin, spent so much time on the first one for the reason that they were, that you were going to create a template.
That's it.
So, so this isn't anything new. This isn't, you guys haven't just changed your mind all of a sudden. This has been since the very beginning, since we started. So it's no surprise and it was no surprise to them. I, I, I told them and I, I told them that I wasn't even authorized to discuss substantive changes.
When the Monroe brothers came here, the first question was by me, have you read the host community agreement? Do you have any problem? Fine. And they're the first one that wants to delete the reopen clause.
But their lawyers did this.
Oh, I get that.
On their behalf. I mean, they probably don't want us struggling.
But we're done with this because we don't need to hassle this out anymore. Amy's going to go back to them and say, we're done, forget it, it's over.
Forget the commas, zeros.
So, um, two other things that we kind of have on here. Um, I don't really know if I care to discuss anything related to the board of health regulations. I just, um, yeah, I don't think that I have any questions on it.
On choice.
The danger, the danger when it was written, and I brought that up at the selectmen's meeting. Did you write it, Katie? Did you write the board of health one?
No. So this was, uh, this was a Mass Association of Health Boards template agreement. Um, I reviewed and gave some comments. I'm not sure they were all integrated or not.
My, my, my comment in the beginning when the board of health was writing their bylaw was that it should come under the purview of the attorneys. And it didn't. So each department could have.
The CCC's overview of what the HCAs look like, but it doesn't really, I didn't think it really clarified anything at all.
Right. So the position that the CCC has taken at this point in time is that they don't have any regulatory authority to get involved in these contracts. They have done a study of sort of what different municipalities are doing, what the, the terms are. There are some members of the board who feel that municipalities have overreached and are looking to, to have some regulatory authority, but there's been a majority vote of the board that they are not at this point in time taking any authority. There has been a recent court case, um, in the Essex Superior Court where, uh, an applicant had, um, asked the court to get involved with respect to municipalities and this, and, and basically had brought a request for injunction looking for the CCC to, um, assume regulatory authority and declare certain terms in, in HCAs invalid. Um, the Superior Court also found that there was no regulatory authority for the CCC. So we have at least one court decision. We have the CCC themselves who are saying we're not getting involved. who are saying, we're not getting involved. The one thing that has happened is that, as a result of this report, they have said to the legislature, this issue is out here. And to the extent that there was some legislative intent for us to have the regulatory authority, perhaps there needs to be a legislative clarification. And they kind of kicked it back to them and said, if you want to clarify this for everybody, go ahead, but for right now, the position we're taking is that we're not getting involved.
But, but the original vote, I believe, and I could be wrong, was four to one not to get involved in host community agreements. They then recently reversed that, is four to one to give a suggested option that they could be involved. So they changed their vote. They did a flip-flop, I believe. Obviously, they haven't gone to try to add a law that they are going to, but they voted four to one.
To refer to the legis-
To refer to the legislation. So that began, in my mind, to open the door a little bit, but right now, it's, it's like always, they suggest this, this, and this, but it hasn't become law anywhere. But it certainly is a door that they'll find out they can add a hundred employees, so they'll add a hundred employees and want to purview every host community agreement sometime in the future, but they don't now. But they did do a flip-flop vote.
Yeah.
I, I had a question, too, on Northeast Alternatives, the HCA that just got signed without a single charge. They're, I, I thought they were medical and recreational cultivation.
No, I, I think, and my question was, did they, I, I thought they were just looking for expansion.
If they needed a just-
A letter of non-opposition? No, I think they were just going for recre-, like, they are a medical cultivator right now, but they're looking to just do another location here that would be adult use cultivation.
Right, right. He only came before us Northeast, right?
No, it's medical manufacturing of medical and recreational.
Right, plants, but they're only cultivating, they're cultivating both.
Yeah, cultivation and processing, but co-located facility.
Right, right.
Oh, yeah, so I guess that is, that is a question. If we just issue a letter of non-opposition on the cultivation.
Did they ask for it?
No, and that's my question, do they need to?
Well, under co-location, do they, do they have to get a letter of non-opposition if they have an HCA? Or have they-
If it's medical?
Yeah.
They should still require, that's still a requirement.
Okay.
They haven't heard that, but we would have heard about it from them.
I'll have to look. I'll have to look.
Because they do have regulations for co-location.
I would let them ask for it.
Right, okay.
And I, remember I had asked you to, you asked him. You, you definitely did, because you sent me an email that you had asked him about 502.
Okay, maybe I-
And then, if he was subject to 502 and needed a letter, I thought it was, if he needed a letter, he'll-
They have medical dispensaries located in other communities.
Is that what, that was his answer?
That was his, yes.
That he may not hear.
Right, but it does say in that, that HCA, right, that they're doing adult use and medical cultivation.
But if they only apply for the-
Yes.
Adult use now, they may not need the letter at this point in time for their state licensing.
Gotcha. All right, okay, I didn't, I gotta-
Just one last question on host community agreements. I understand the process on the special permit, you know, identifying medical and then identifying recreational. But on a host community agreement, should we make ours more general and, and outline that you have the right to do medical recreational processing, that type of thing, or no?
I would just, they should, the community agreement for what they are, the uses they are requesting.
Okay, that's fine.
Does anyone have any other questions? Anything else you want to talk about?
No, this was great, though. I really appreciate the meeting. I think this was a great extension of what we were kind of going with at ZBRAC almost on what we did this, and the plan for it.
And I think the selectmen, after this meeting with council, you wanted to meet with the two, the appeals board and the planning board, or do you still-
We talked about that. What do you guys think about having then that joint meeting with ZBA?
I actually thought that, I actually thought that this was going to be that meeting, because now we've said to the attorneys, make all the changes.
Well, I, I don't even know, though, that we need to, I mean, if, if we submit a letter to planning board and ZBA and say, hey, we met with town council, and, you know, we talked about streamlining the process, you know, and just kind of-
And hope that it doesn't look unilateral?
And say, yeah, you want to have a-
It's already, it's already unilateral, so of course it is. By not having them here-
It will, I mean, it, the, the bylaw will go to the planning board for, for their report.
No, they might be having a-
You guys talked about just a cover letter that what you meant.
I'm really comfortable with that.
Yeah, but you talked about it at ZBRAC, but that's what I'm kind of saying is, if we kind of say, hey, look, you know, based upon the conversations you had at ZBRAC, and what we talked about with town council at our meeting, here's the proposed bylaw, you know, we're happy to attend to it.
Well, the ZBRAC, though, the zoning board, we didn't have the conversation with them. You had a ZBRAC in your, right, so, right.
But who's on ZBRAC and zoning board?
ZBRAC and not-
John Oliveri.
Zoning bylaw review committee. Yeah, okay. So that ZBRAC has nothing to do with-
Well, no, there's a representative.
Except when there were two, no, I know that, I know. That were okay with, like, this. I don't think they'll have a problem with it, but now it's too late.
No, I, I, I think, you know-
Well, no, they could still have a problem with it, but that could be a problem for us, but we'll, we'll just have to see what happens. I think that this, I think we're in consensus, and we're in consensus with town council and our zoning enforcement officer, that this is the plan that we think would be best suited. Now, it can go to those committees for them to have a dialogue about it, and they can give feedback back to us as to what their concerns may be, but I think that we should just run with this. I think to, to try to do the, you're going to force all the process, and you won't get it in front of voters for town meeting.
Right, I mean, I think-
I think this, the concept is, they're enough to move forward.
Yeah, I'm happy with them having something in front of them to have a conversation about. You know, that, I don't want to have another conversation, to have a conversation about something then that they're going to have in front of them to have a conversation about.
That's, that's a process for the planning board, has to hold a hearing on it.
Otherwise, we're going to end up like applying for a marijuana permit, because it's like the same thing.
Oh, sorry.
Lost track. So let's, we're good. We'll have this squared away, and then we will just send it out to planning board, zoning board, and get them to-
Board of Health, um, maybe they, they have, they're interchanging the use of the point zero zero and the point zero zero zero.
Are they? So you need to fix that right away.
So they need to be, they need to be-
Oh, boy. We need to, we need to, we need a conversation. Needs to redline and-
They should even have a, a bylaw on it, but that's all right.
It's not a bylaw, John. It's rules and regulations, it's a suggestion.
They don't need it.